North Bend folks, are y'all getting settled still?
Okay, all right. Good afternoon. The Northern City Council Work Session meeting for February 24th, 2025, for 32 in the council chambers. Now go ahead and call me to order, ask our city recorder to help us with the call, and then we'll go into public comment. Councilman Jones.
President.
Councilman Hamilton.
Here.
Council President, our voting.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Engleke. Here. Councilor Schultz. Here. Councilor Slater.
Here.
Councilor Flores.
Here.
Thank you. All right, we do have public comment this evening. I have a sheet in front of me, and is there anybody else online? We do not have anybody online. Okay, well, it looks like we have Chris Newman here to speak, and then before we start, I just want to say thank you for participating in the public comment this evening. The public comment period is the central part of local government meetings, and each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes input into consideration, however, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting laws, it's not a time for us to have dialogue with you, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city recorder is the manager. Are you taking any notes and any action that is needed? So we have, so I will go ahead and ask you to state the city that you live in, and can the guest with the mic here can pick it up? Yeah, okay, perfect. If you want to stand up or do that, do that.
My name is Chris Newman. I live in Roseburg, Oregon. I'm a member of the Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association, local chapter here in Coos Bay, North Bend. We have members of our executive board with us, and also live here in North Bend. We are an association of combat veterans from all branches of the United States Armed Forces who ride motorcycles as a hobby. We are not a motorcycle club, and we do not claim territory or have a club axe. We're an association. We are a 501(c)(3) Veterans nonprofit. Our goal and mission is to help vets. Our motto is "Vets Helping Vets." Some of the notable local contributions we've made are donations to Operation Rebuild Hope, assistance to homeless veterans. I'm currently helping a Korean War veteran with an HVAC system that has a huge problem with oxide leak in it. We help widows and veterans, help Thanksgiving food baskets, employee donation, creating families, help elderly vets clean up property, and visit Oregon veterans' homes. We've also helped clean up the hallway storm damage from veterans at no cost. We cut, split, and delivered fire with the vets and their windows at no cost. On August 2nd, 2025, our local chapter will be held in a state meeting here in North Bend. We will have approximately 200 to 300 people coming from all over the state here to bring revenue to the city of North Bend. As a local nonprofit that helps our community, we are requesting the use of the community center for this state meeting. Our hope is that the city council will either waive or reduce fees for this meeting. We appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. As noted, our staff will be back here.
Thank you.
So.
One day within August 2nd.
August 2nd.
Thank you.
All right, well, we're going to go ahead and move on to our continued planning session. You're more than welcome to listen to save for this.
Well, probably. But during this time, we.
Well, we appreciate you attending the meeting, and you're welcome to come out and public comment anytime. All right, we will go ahead and number four on the agenda for the work session tonight is our strategic planning session, two visions and priorities. So I will look to our, we've got some guests on Zoom, Emily.
Hello.
Hello.
Can you all hear me? This is Sarah Lechner. I am a consultant with Cragio Group, here to support you all in the strategic planning process tonight. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'm going to share my screen and walk us through a high-level agenda, and then we'll jump in. Well, you know what? I may need permission to share my screen. Is there someone who can set me up with co-hosts?
Did that work, Sarah?
Looks like it did, yeah. Can y'all see that now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, well, really excited to be back together with you all today. Today, we get to dive into the work of starting to draft your strategic plan. So agenda for tonight, we'll do quick kind of welcome, getting backgrounded in the process. It would help me to just do another round of introductions and be reminded of everyone that's in the room. And then we'll do an overview on mission and vision, what we mean, how we define them, how they're useful. And we'll begin drafting your vision statement. We'll take a break. Oh, this timing is, sorry, I adjusted this from an earlier session. But the time lengths are all correct. We'll take a break when it feels right. I see that you all are having dinners, so please also just take care of yourselves throughout the process and do what you need to do in that regard. And then we'll get into the mission drafting piece, and then we'll work on your priority areas. So we should be coming out of our session tonight with a draft vision statement, draft mission statement, and then draft priority areas. That will set us up for our next session, where we will work on success measures and initiatives in each of the priority areas. So in terms of just kind of getting re-grounded in the process, we always like to propose some basic starter team or community agreements for our conversation tonight. So first of all, I want to encourage you all to be creative, think boldly, to assume good intent of one another, but also to, of course, be responsible for our impact and the things that we say or do. I'm hopeful that we can have some open and trusting conversations tonight, that we can encourage both curiosity and engagement. I do want to ask for folks to both step up, so please share, please contribute, and to also step back. So really want to make sure that we create space to hear from everyone tonight, so please notice how much of the airtime, so to speak, you're taking up. Anything else that folks want to add in terms of community agreements for our conversations tonight?
Yeah.
Folks, okay, great, thanks.
I don't know where I fit into this.
You just jump right on in.
Can I before we started?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
A couple of, just a couple of slides for you really quickly, and I thought this would be helpful to you as you're thinking about your priorities and goals, and then I have a task of you as well, so it's informational and an ask. So as we go into next budget season and next year's city budget, the general fund is in a shortfall situation. That's not new information, but this is information that was taken from last year's budget, and you can see that we had total budgeted revenue of about 8.3 million, which we expected to bring into the general fund to pay for core services. Can you scroll down just a little bit? And then you can see our budgeted expenditures were about 9.4 million. That leaves a million-dollar deficit that going into next year's budget, we're going to have to find a way to shore up. I cannot in good conscience recommend a budget that's spending over a million dollars. So I think those key and core services are really important for you to think about tonight as you're doing your strategic planning and can really help us as staff. Here are your thoughts on like what your priorities are in terms of providing just those essential services that cities provide. Scroll down just a little bit more. So as of today, I'm projecting out that the general fund will have operating reserves of about $3 million at the end of the year, and then emergency reserves of $2 million on top of that. That does not mean that is money that I think we should dip into or spend into. We still have $1 million to shore up in next year's budget, or else it will eat into this. That $3 million of working capital is really important. That's the money that has to carry us from July through that November. And then emergency reserves, we haven't touched. I don't believe we should touch those until we have a formal policy of when you all believe it's appropriate to actually tap into those emergency reserves, but that's what's left with like general operations. So that's the lay of the land that I would just ask you to consider as you're thinking about priorities tonight. Now, I do have a task that ties into this, but it also will help with some direction in terms of the coming May ballot and also next year's budget potentially. So if you scroll forward, please. This is our least budgeted expenditures on an annual basis is about $4 million. We have a public P that raises about $864,000, meaning there's about $3.2 million of transfers that the general fund made to fund police. So my ask would do, this direction is, I can, I've shown what a $5 increase, a $10 increase, or a $15 increase would provide in terms of additional funding for that public safety, and that would be something that would have to go out onto the May ballot. Now, why am I asking this today? I have a deadline of this Friday, I believe, to get a ballot title into Coos County, if that is something that we'd like to advance. What my direction would, or my ask is, like, if you do have the appetite for that and want to go out for that, what range am I looking at there in terms of using, in terms of putting forth into the written ballot? And so you can see on a $20, a $5 increase would give us funding coming in at about 1.1. That's not, that's just on, that's just 1.1 in total. In terms of it being over the, it's not, that's not in addition to the 864,000 that's already being raised. It would just be my whole of 1.1. $10 increase would give us 1.4 million, a $15 increase if passed related to bringing in 1.7. So you can see, if you scroll down a little further, that $5, $10, and $15 increase, that's the effect on the right there that would have on the general fund of eating into that million-dollar deficit that we started our conversation about needing to shore up. Also composed on there, just put on there, like saying, hey, what if we did a huge increase, a $60 increase, and we wanted to fund 100% of all police, you'd be looking at about a $75 month fee, a large increase, but I'm just needed to go out there for your consideration, so you have that information.
So I think what you're saying was this 75 bucks covers the gap for police.
That would cover police in its entirety, and you would not.
And we wanted to go in the general.
You would not be in the general fund at all. The obvious question of that is, I pay taxes to go into the general fund. Why shouldn't that, shouldn't some of that go towards the police? So that's kind of the, but I wanted to throw it out there.
They did the increase?
I think it's been at $15. Five years ago.
Okay. Because currently, no one wants to increase anything.
This is true. We've seen increases since then, but
But not about.
But not about, not enough fee. It's stayed at $15.
I think we'd have to. I think.
We have to, yeah, unless it's.
That's part, that was one of the measures. One of the ballot measures was cap at 15, and the other was no fee increases beyond 15.
So there's a, there's a salient point here, and that is that first and foremost, the charter provisions state that you can only go out in a May or November election. So if you go, if you decide and you get staffed, no direction on May, you know, and you can scramble pretty quickly, but it's going to be fast. We can, we can hit the deadline. The next bite of the apple will be in November. After you figure out how we're going to balance the budget. Right now, any increase or new fee requires that super majority.
Yeah.
And you only have 38% turnout in the last election. May, the 63% in November. In November. So yeah, so you've got, you know, we've got to have, and potentially, you know, again, you may or may not have that large turnout. The public safety, we're talking general funds. For public safety, in this case, the police, obviously, has a large piece of that pie. The fire department's about $1 million overall budget-wise. And, and so anything, any dollars that come in reduces the stress on the general fund.
Yeah.
In general fund, you have police, you have fire, you have parks, you have some public works, you have finance administration. Did that leave anybody out? Okay. And so you know, as Jeff said, if we were to just say we have to figure out how to capture, say, police for the next five, 10 years and capture their whole current budget, even if we've raised it to 75, next year will be higher, the year after is going to be higher, and the year after that's going to be higher.
Yeah.
Even if we cut a million dollars, next year there'll be a little bit more and a little bit more until we get potential relief from the state. Well, the cities had their meeting last week. They are looking at potentially going to the people, the public, the voters in 2032. I calculate that to be 65, then retired. But they feel that that's how long it takes to get messaging to the public so that they understand what's going on. By then, the majority of a lot of governments will already be bankrupt. The fact I just saw a city in California put in for bankruptcy this past week. Public safety fees. I sent a couple of you all a article out of the Eugene paper about the public safety fee provided that they implemented in Eugene. There's now, the Chamber of Commerce there has made a countermeasure to say, whoa, governing body, you should not be allowed to create fees. Now, that's the line under home rule. That's constitution. However, if they come in and they do a ballot initiative, much like us heard here in North Bend, they'll figure out that your home rule doesn't mean anything. It means squat. It's the voters. That is home rule. They so choose that they're not going to fund you, they're not going to fund you. We also have the option of loading a ballot initiative. I discussed this with our city attorney, that says we could actually alter our charter, and that would not require a super majority. That is just simple, simple majority. However, you would be undermining the will of the people by going in and saying, okay, that fee was, that restriction was so overbearing, it cannot apply to, say, police or fire or wastewater. Again, that's something for you all to discuss if you're doing strategic planning. And then lastly, are there any department heads, are you finished yet? Okay. Are there any other department heads that want to chime in based on your sort of state of your department and any guidance you might have for consideration of the governing body as they decide through this process what core services shall and do need to be funded? And what are strategic plans and direction look like for the next few years? Because that's really the charge of the governing body. Rob, I think you've got to go, but.
Obviously, in your strategic plan, one of the major issues was transportation utilities. I think that was number one on the list. However, as David just mentioned, I don't see a chance in raising sewer fees unless we amend our charter to begin with. Again, last May was 38% voting. You need, with our super majority, you need 51% of the elected voters, so you need at least 51% vote. And they all have to be in favor at that point, 50.1. We have 63%. Obviously, we could amend it. I think we could get close to 50% by some thoughtful messaging and taking the 5% off, doing some other potential adjustments. But to get the super majority at this point on any vote is likely, it doesn't mean we couldn't put our message out still and be consistent with our message, but the likelihood of it passing is without the H Charter amendment, so we don't need the super majority is pretty much nil in my opinion, but that's updated. I don't want to be a Debbie Downer. They said be be respectful, and that's just my opinion. So that's another consideration. Again, transportation, your streets, we do have the provisions to have a street fee. We can always go for that, but we have other problems with other budgets also. I just, because provisions are already in our ordinance to start a street fee. We beat lease to it, but they scooped us on the, starting the fee back in 2018. It wasn't, it wasn't Cal, but it was what we laid the groundwork and then we got scooped, but I understand that. But Coos Bay does have a street fee, just so you know. Gas tax would be a difficult bit to go out for because Coos Bay has a street fee unless we're, yeah, we did combine vote for on a gas tax, I think in 2016 or 18.
Street fee would have to be on the ballot though, too, correct?
It would have to be on the ballot, because if any of those would be a voter issue, again, if it's any new fees or above that, have to be a super majority. So that's my two cents. I'm not going to beat you over the head with that. It's just.
And so the charter amendment that you mentioned, you know, and I don't want to think that's kind of the start. That was why I mentioned Eugene. You could go in and change it, and then your voters could come right back and hit you on ballot initiatives. The only way around this, as I was saying to the mayor coming down, sure, we could have a bake sale, but how are we going to staff it? We could start a rent-a-cop program, see, because rentals are excluding. So if you want a cop, you're renting that for the time. Fire comes out, it's not a fee for service, you're renting the equipment, put out the fire. So, you know, I, that's, that sounds very sarcastic, but the reality is, is you all have a very, very tough set of things before you, and now I'm going to run over to parks because he has reluctantly put any of this in writing. But in order to get the parks up to current state and federal regulatory code would cost us roughly how much?
Right around $2 million.
And sand that you have, can't have sand. Those nice little really popular, the hard little things, the wood borders.
The wooden borders are not.
Can't have those.
The, a lot of your equipment, you'll never go around with the things at railroad parks. All of those have been deemed unusable years and years ago. Never been addressed or rebooted. I did three playgrounds this year, just topping off with the wood mulch, which is something we use as a medium for falls. It cost me $10,000 to put in four inches in three parks. Just to do the wood mulch under the equipment that we have that has sand, we'd need at least 10 times that. And that's just the wood mulch and a little sand. So there are, and then it's addressed in the master plan if you have to, to get a chance to look. They address immediate needs one year out, three years out, and in the future. At one year out, and I, you know, I fully understand we're not going to be able to do that, but we are going to have to start taking little bites off to go fewer, tear things down. It's just the fact that where we're at, I can trim trees and mow grass all day long, paint stuff and make it look pretty, but I cannot meet, make it meet national safety requirements.
All right, so this is initially Sarah's show. Are there any questions from the councils to have before we hand it back over to Ms. Sarah to walk through your process?
Any councils, any questions to have?
Yeah, any questions you all have of us?
Yeah, I do. A couple of things. One of them is your charter amendment that could go through, pass in a basic majority of who shows and who's part of it. I think there's some credence to that, and we say, well, we're not attending to the will of the people. Right now, what we've got is those that don't want to participate are determining what you get to do and what not. And it would seem to me a logical set, and anybody that's got their head on straight might think, you know, let's get those involved, and they can make the decision on that. So that change makes a certain amount of sense, I guess, from my side. And the other one is a little bit here, we talked about, you come up and you're looking for different ways to to put it, give it like the rent-a-cop and the silver thing. I think the credibility we're trying to build with our residents and our people gets back to the old duck theory, you know? If it looks like a duck, quacks like a duck, walks like a duck, it must be a duck. So even you called a rental, whatever it is, people say, well, hell, now they're trying to tax this decision. So you got to be very careful of those, those sides of things.
So Sarah, how are you planning to spend the next two and a half, whatever amount of time I have?
Yeah, so our time today was going to be focused on drafting a vision statement, a mission statement, and then identifying up to five strategic priority areas for the strategic plan.
Okay. So with that little prelude, I have a feeling that our strategic priorities are going to be all about finance and how to increase, either eliminate services or figure out corporate revenue streams.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I want to be just clear around, I mean, this isn't a budgeting process, so, but the intent here is to determine what it is. I believe you all wanted to set a three-year strategic plan. Does that sound right?
Two.
Two. Two, okay, sorry. Yeah, so in the next two years, what are our key areas of focus? That then will, of course, impact budget decisions, but just want to be clear about, you know, what we're working on and how it can be used. So, I mean, with that in mind, I, I did want to just kind of do some reflection and kind of, and grounding in the current context. So this might actually be a great place for us to just jump in and start there. So but just before I jump in, does that sound like a good use? But just before I jump in, does that sound like a good use of y'all's time tonight? I mean, I am. Um, on contract with you all to ensure that over the course of a few sessions, we get to uh develop a strategic plan. And I wanna support you all to make sure you're having the conversations that you need to have right now. Um, so working on vision, mission and strategic priorities, does that seem like a good use of time for tonight?
So I'm looking to the council to see if they have any other questions for you or agree with that and what are your guys' thoughts?
Currently, there's two of us or two of you guys who've been here for this process before, so a lot of us have never done this before. I'm pretty sure the majority of us have not. So I would look for the people who've done this process before. To help guide us, cause I have not been a part of this yet. I know you have an area and I have not done this.
Uh, what week, two years ago?
Did not.
We didn't sit around and do the program.
It was a different style.
It was, we didn't have a facilitator like this. We did it as a council.
Yeah, we could do it right after, no surveys.
So you're, no surveys?
Yeah, uh well. It was a different style. But it was one of the first meetings, yeah.
Yeah, it was done over um four meetings total.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
It's a new process anyway, though, so.
Yeah. I'm not really confident is what I'm saying.
I mean, I'm I'm looking at, I mean, I saw this before, but when I look at the uh survey results. Um, you know, the top four. Are the top four for everybody. Like this isn't just what we would choose. I mean, infrastructure, the top, public safety, second, housing affordability, third, economic development. Fourth, um it is a little bit in contrast to what people say about, you know, what they love most. Within parts, you know, the challenges, those are right on target with what we're hearing from the staff.
Uh, and so as far as Sarah was saying before, as far as. How to roll out like the next three hours, are you guys comfortable with her proceeding? Um, and then we'll probably dive into each one of those things a little bit more.
Sure.
Yeah, so good.
Great, okay. So let's just kind of start then with some of this kind of big picture reflection, based on what we just heard. From staff, let's just name a- and from your own experience um as leaders and community members. What is the current context for North Bend in which we are creating this strategic plan? What are the realities?
So I would say that one of the um things that's probably all on our minds right now, especially after. You know, the last election is the reality is that what we bring in to fund the city um through property taxes. Is not enough to cover the general services. And so it's um, there's been some other things that we're trying to do to promote economic growth. Um, and those things haven't been successful. And so it's it probably, I mean, I I know for myself, it feels just overwhelming to think about like how do we do all these initiatives forward? Without the lack of funding. And potentially even the concern that we might have to eliminate services at some point. So like that, if 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 your question is like, what? Having to figure out what's the concept? I and I do not understand any of that. Is that on one of these pages? Or you?
No, she's typing. Oh, okay. So um.
So it is, um and and I and I also wanna make sure that I'm like really clear. Um, so I have been on council for a total of six years. Two as a counselor and four as a mayor. And six years ago, our city administrator at that time, uh named Harris O'Connor. And there's probably some people in this room that remember his five-year plan. And in that five-year plan, it was like, this is, this has been no, you know, there's no secret here. It was the fact that uh. You know, the way Oregon collects their property taxes is not enough to fund city services. And you know, and that was before the exponential, in two thousand eighteen, this is like before like the exponential um. Cost of living increases. And at that time, there was a five-year plan that said, if you do nothing, when you reach five years. You were gonna literally have to close the pool, lock up and put a chain of events around the plants. It's like, do you guys remember that? Do you remember? Cause I've I've been looking for this uh document, I wanted to showcase it, like there's.
Well, it's also in the budget messages every year.
Yeah.
Prior, like, you know, from like.
And so.
Mid-tens all the way since.
So we've been watching that over the years. We've been really lucky because we've had. A new city administrator come in that has been able to be really creative with the grants that have come in.
I think those are the only thing keeping anything afloat or any equipment.
Keeping things afloat.
Yeah, for for public safety, our our business grant.
We use the ARCA money in the best of ways. We never used it for stamping, which you saw a lot of, uh, there was, you know, you saw some government agencies that did that. Uh, we didn't do that. We made sure that we used it in other areas that were sustainable. Um, there was the uh five-year levy on the. Pool for um to help with that operation management that gave us a few more years. And but at some point, it's just bandages. Um, and so, you know, here and now, thinking about that, I was like, well, that was the five-year plan and that was six years ago. So thank goodness that we had a staff that was able to keep some things going. Um, but when we look at it like, you know, through this lens now of like. Especially if we're gonna have, you know, have some handcuffs put on us for some economic development, um. How do we, how do we get a vision and a strategic plan that is going, not going to ignore those things? Cause we can sit around here and talk, I mean, how we wanna live in a place where we can live, work, play all day long. But if that is not the reality of of. The finances that are coming in. Um, it's really hard to kind of like start crafting those statements. Yeah, we're worried about the sewer collapsing underneath us, some of those road bikes, right? It's not making me wanna think about. Fun things. Yeah, yeah. So Sarah, does that answer your question as far as context where my mind's at?
Yeah, it does. Yep. Yeah, we don't necessarily need to answer all these questions, but these are the kinds of things I'm kind of curious about, just so we can get on the same page. Um, around um this particular strategic plan. So anything you all wanna share in terms of current context or? Like, what do you think you need this plan to do for the city right now?
One, I don't know if this is possible because. Yeah, everything's hard, but it it is, I'm curious. If the department heads have a sense of. Um, not so much of works because that's all capital improvement. I mean, but I'm just thinking about like parks. Um, you know, a way to downscale our capital. Needs or improvements, just how far does our budget actually stretch year over year for just the people and the gas? You know, um, I know, you know, that's a, it's a gray area, but I just am curious about. The gap. I mean, I'm just, I'm just curious about. You know, maybe there's ways to scale back capital. Project, you know, projects that involve capital instead of just paying the the panel employees, we have to keep doing what they're doing.
Any, or kind of certain?
We we don't have a lot of capital spending in our budget. So those three years, there's not a lot of capital spending in that. Uh, what, most of that is in general fund, but the overwhelming ability to get personnel.
Yeah.
And then there are some uh. In the general government, um, we pay a lot of legal fees. We have a pretty big budget for that.
Is that because we have litigious residents or is that because there's some nature in what we're doing?
I think we've occurred. Over the past. Year or so, quite a bit more than we should in legal fees.
Like a million?
No.
Or like two hundred thousand?
I think like this year was four hundred thousand. We're not going to give it back.
She's done a lot of our council, so we'll have to save you this year.
That's another way to get that flavor of this. We have this, we have a million dollar deficit. Um, but we already run the, I mean, this is my impression.
And you are correct, for the last four and a half years. You know, from from the get-go, our first um strategic plans. In fact, our our first strategic plan was was done uh over in the Bay of the fire station. Um, I remember a street called that. Um, and uh. Uh, that and that's where we birthed our first real strategic plan. And even from there. Uh, it was looking at things that were going to cut costs and keep us sustainable. But the reality is, is that um as one councilor member said, when we would bring forth. And have consistently brought forth the collective bargaining unit agreements. Apparently, this is, you know, the 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 first administration where you've seen the true impact, the real numbers. Um, in fact, Jessica Tera, which is finance director right there, did refer to it as, this is the way David likes to say it. Um, because um I look at the budget totally different, that if you're going to pass a a union contract. You need to know what it's gonna cost in year one, year two, year three. And you need to know because we're budgeting, how much tax increment are we going to get until we sustain it? And so we had those conversations. And so when we did last year's budget, we did the prelude that we're going to stretch a little bit more of unbalance. Cause we have to get the library project done. We have to get it finished. And so that is finishing, and so that extra that we put in there and luckily. Um, uh, the the library staff and friends of the library and every other group stepped up with grants. To actually help even take off a lot of that pressure to finish that project. Uh, because whenever you get into a capital project, you find, oh, wow, didn't see that one coming. Um, and so we we've had to address that. We're now to the point where if you look. What Jeff has shown you, this is what we bring in. This is what's going out. This is the gap. And so every year, uh, costs is going up. Over the last five years, twenty-three and a half percent uh CPI increase. And so as Sarah said, this is not a budget finance. You'll have all that opportunity at the budget committees and this. This is strategic planning to take all that in so that your strategic plan is the marketing order shut up. So that when we put together, when I ultimately come and present you the budget, it is reflective of your strategic plan and the will of the council. And you dictated what core services you want funded. This is not, you know, David wants this and he's gonna throw it in there. We've always reflected on your strategic plan. And so this is what you're doing now, is putting together your strategic plan so that we as staff can implement it.
Well, do you write grants or the grants related to this? Like you touched, like you say, this is in our strategic plan. So if we like write certain, when we get those strategic plans, that helps you get grants?
Um, the strategic plan allows you sometimes to get projects done, like your pump plant. But strategic plan or it says, hey, they said go out and get grants, that's not gonna give you a grant. Grants are competitive and grants are drawing up exponentially.
Yeah, I get that. I'm just saying, like, what is the point of the strategic plan? Just to guide you guys and basically which way we're headed eventually, that's not helping us.
Yeah, think think of it this way, in in Sarah's guide, as as we do the. The 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 vision, mission and and the pathways and tentacles as to how we get there. And follow that road to ultimately get to whatever your vision is. And so if you say, okay, you know, physical sustainability has been the key. So we have done over the last four or five years, everything we can physically. This year is gonna be a little different. We we already know at at the department. Um, we are now looking aggressively uh at basically program-based funding. We need to see what everything that we're doing is costing us. And then that will help decide. Do we need to find another way? Do we need to eliminate? Do we need to?
I think Sarah wanted to separate the strategic plan from the budget because we started with money. So that maybe is how we started this meeting. I think being aware of it's one thing, but trying to mount a plan when I feel like budget was brought up right away.
It's not your job to come up with a plan. It's your job to come up with the strategic strategies. And then we will work collectively on the the path to meet those top. And so Sarah said, you'll come up with sort of three to five, if you will, and then we'll have a couple action items as to how to achieve those.
Okay.
However, the reason for the budget financing is, is we can't be where we were two years ago or even four years ago. And have pie in the sky where, for instance, they throw out and say, well, we need to build more baseball fields.
No, yeah.
So that's, that's why we let it off the way we let it off. It'd be no different than your own household budget.
We are aware of this and so can maybe letting everyone know that we're aware of this, but also I just think it's interesting that that's how we started. Cause I feel like my brain's now on that and it's really hard for me to think of a vision.
No, well, the vision, the vision is, the vision is to sustain our sewers. Sustaining our pace and fire. Get some housing, you know what I mean? Like instead of, you know, something more grand.
Knowing all this, then I'm thinking that as we like, as we work through. The agenda this evening as far as coming up with the vision and the mission statement, um and. Um, however, Sarah, you're gonna facilitate the discussion. We're most likely, I would think, have some very specific action items to try to sustain some funding. And part of that conversation could be as we leave tonight, where this, this is where the strategic plan and that. Um, these action items would be, maybe the direction from this council is to ask the staff to come up with some items that could be on the next ballot.
Yeah.
You know. So, let's, so Sarah, how does he wanna proceed next?
Yeah, well, just kind of curious if there's any other context setting that folks want to share, you know, and and maybe this. This last one, you know, based on, based on what? Must we make our decisions? So as you think about what, are you gonna decide what gets prioritized? What are some of the criteria that are coming to mind for you all?
I haven't heard anything from Council Hamilton this.
Financial stability.
Yes.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's what our plan's gonna, it's gonna be based around is. Um, what can we make the most of our money and how can we, how can we bring services to meet the growth? The growth line there, what costs are going up versus our departments and what we do as a city. So we're not having to play this game every two years on. What what next do we cut? Like, I mean, pretty soon we cut down to one guy mowing the lawn and one guy telling him where to mow. I mean, we gotta figure this out.
There's only one guy. There'd be, then there would be two guys.
Well, you gotta supervise your talent. Now it's not motivated yet.
Do you have any comment?
No.
Counselor Slater, was there anything that you wanted to add, answer that question about any?
Questions what?
Based on what must we make in our decisions?
Yeah, what are like the key criteria for you that are gonna influence what you wanna prioritize?
Well, well, we did all send in strategic um. Budget statements, whatever was in the form.
Yeah, what is our, what is our form?
Yeah, I I'll show you all that.
Yeah, and I I guess what I envision here is that we're working on visioning. Not sure if that gets the strategic side gets into the mission of what this organization needs to do to achieve that. But I I think, again, and maybe obviously the number one thing is stabilize funding and. And come up with ways in which to do that on a consistent basis as opposed to a one-time basis. But I do believe that uh over this next two years, there's a. A few other things that you could specify that you'd wanna be part of and see things happen. You know, in in that particular aspect, whether it's housing, whether it's uh infrastructure, infrastructure is a big one. You know, not only the wastewater, but uh, well, roads too. So I lose, I put some things that way. So, you know, it reminds me of a spot where ODOT got federal funding several years ago. And the interesting thing was those things that were on the shelf and set to go were the ones that got funded. Which means you anticipated, here's what we wanna do, let's put it together that way. Maybe there's a grant to take care of it, but you know, here are the things that we see needed in our, in our city coming up, so. Uh, I I guess it's just that site and I might refer back to that four, was it four and a half years ago? Yeah, that one of them was in that that we came out with was uh, put together a way to uh. Celebrate uh volunteers and staff and so forth. And what you've seen is an excellent job of that over the last four years. That had a little bit of cost, but not a full, uh, did it create a a good attitude, a mindset? That had a little bit of cost, but not a whole, uh, did it create a, a good attitude among both staff and the volunteer representation that did. So see it was a, a valuable piece that fit into the overall view of the city.
Right, yeah, that's helpful. I think just that kind of being prepared. Should there be future funding opportunities, um, that you, that you all are clear and what you would fund, what you would want to prioritize? Um, yeah, okay. Well, let's move into the visioning and, um, first though, I do just want to kind of frame up each of the different strategic plan elements that we'll be working on and how they go together. So the vision is that big, bold, ideal future state that you want to create for the community. Um, and I'm going to encourage you all tonight to still think boldly, uh, in this area. This is a place where we still want to be aspirational. Uh, mission is a bit more, uh, practical. Uh, it's your purpose as an organization in carrying out that vision. So that's where we can start to be a little bit, I think, more, um, grounded, practical, straightforward in what is the city's role and core work. Um, and then we'll identify those three to five priority areas for the two-year strategic plan. Um, today, we'll work on starting on that. And then in the next session, for each of those priority areas, we'll start to identify up to two success measures. So how will we know if we're having the impact we want to have in this priority area? And then what actions will we take on? So you'll be able to identify up to three actions. So these are the projects, the initiatives, the efforts, um, that you'll be working on in each of those, um, priority areas. Um, so this is what it'll start to come together and look like. You'll have that vision, mission, um, for each of the priority areas, those success measures and strategic actions. Um, and then just to revisit in terms of timeline, so our next session is on April seventh. So I will likely have some homework, uh, maybe in the form of another forum or survey for you all between now and April seventh to start giving input on those success measures and strategic actions. Um, so we'll be working towards having a full drafted plan after that April seventh, uh, session. And then April twenty-eighth is when we come back together with all of the cohorts, um, from all the four cities to talk about, um, the implementation. Um, I think I've already covered that sufficiently, so I'm going to skip over those. We just did that. All right, so let's get into vision, mission and how they work together. So shared a little bit about this, but, um, vision is that why? It's the, that ideal future state. Um, it often can answer the prompt, a future in which, which is what you all responded to in the form. It should be generous and aspirational. So we do want it to be like a pull for you all, something inspiring. Um, whereas the mission, as I shared, is a little bit more grounded, practical. It's kind of the what? Um, your purposes as a city, um, or meaning organization. What you are here to make happen. So. Good. Um, so vision statement, I'm going to share some vision statements from some other cities. Um, just to get you thinking, um, and see some other examples. So, here is one, um, from Lafayette. The city of Lafayette is a vibrant, forward-thinking and welcoming community that promotes personal and economic growth for residents, businesses and visitors, while fostering economic sustainability, environmental stewardship and social equity. Um, this one is from Lakewood in California. To be a welcoming and thriving community where everyone can live, work and play in a safe and healthy environment. And here is one from, uh, Richmond. For the city of Richmond to be the most appealing, livable and well-managed community in Canada. And here we have Fort Lauderdale, kind of other extreme, straightforward. We are the city you never want to leave. Right. Um, so yeah, we said it should be aspirational, it should be inspiring, it should be bold and really thinking about what you want to create for your city. Um, so you all saw the feedback, um, from your community members when we asked, what three words best describe how they envision North Bend in ten years? Um, and so the words you see here, um, all of these words showed up at least four times. Um, so we saw thriving, clean, safe, welcoming, friendly, um, and other similar words. We also asked folks to share what they saw as your current greatest assets, um, natural surroundings. Um, far and away, kind of took, took the lead, um, outdoor recreation, tourism and, and being the gateway to outdoor experiences. Uh, your community spaces. Having the community college and educational opportunities. These are all things that folks really see as assets dedicated community leaders like yourselves. Um, so then you all worked on drafting some sample vision statements in the form. So thank you so much for everyone who was able to make time, um, to do that. I really appreciated your input. So I took those draft vision statements and kind of worked through them, themed them to come up with a couple of sample or draft, I should say, vision statements um, for you all to preview tonight and, um, and we can either land on one of these or something similar. So I'm just going to stop talking and give you all a chance to read these three, take a look, see, um, what you like. Oh, yeah.
Beam in a little bit. Let's just do one at a time because you're going to have to make it really big.
Oh, wow. I'm sorry. I didn't realize that's so hard for y'all to see.
Our TV's not big enough. Our TV is not big enough.
Get our message, Sarah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's too big. Okay.
That's like, that's, that's. Oh, I'm still waiting for it.
Um, let's see. Are you all able to see those now or? Yeah, okay. So I'm going to stop talking. I'm going to give you all a chance to read these, um, and see what you like, see what you don't like, see if there's any that you lean towards.
And I, I do want to help have the, the council, uh, help me remember that we do have Councilor Gordon online as well. If we need to ask him. These are drafts. I like two, uh, but I wish it were a present instead of will. At some point in time, we will be a welcoming connected city.
We can, yeah, we can certainly reframe it as, and as and is, but yeah, just knowing it.
I just, I like that it's short. I like that it's like, you know, there's a lot, you know, people.
There's more than three though, right? We're just seeing three currently.
Yeah, these are her. So the first one is the envision of thriving, safe and inclusive North Bend where residents, businesses and visitors prosper and a clean, vibrant community that celebrates its natural beauty and fosters carriage progress.
I like that.
I like that too. Second, North Bend will be a welcoming, connected city that fosters sustainable economic growth and opportunities for our, um, all our diverse individuals and businesses. Um, three would be the envision North Bend is a place of opportunity where safe, affordable housing, economic prosperity and environmental sustainability create a thriving community for everyone to live, work and play. So those, how many totals do you have?
These are just your stuffs.
Yeah, just these three.
Just these three, okay. Um.
Yeah, we'd love to hear what folks like, anything that feels like it's missing that you would have hoped to see.
Well, because of the outdoor recreation, I liked the natural beauty component in the first one and fostered your progress. I'd be like, it's the team effort.
I like it.
I just feel like they're, they're, they're all blah. It's really, they're all really blah.
I was just also the city that's like, everybody loves in here. Yeah, I can't, I want that to be hard. I like that spread to be envisioned because we're not hitting all of those things. But it doesn't mean that's not something that you want to, you still want to work towards that.
Well, I like, yeah, envision because we are thinking about the future, what we would like to have. Whereas if you think number two, it's, we'll be welcoming, it's been just when the word, I don't like.
At some point in time, we will be welcome. Is there, uh, and feel free, Councilor Gordon, if you want to add to this, it does sound like there's quite a bit of us in the room that like number one. Um, is there anything from number two and three that we would kind of take one of those words and add to number one?
I think I like what number one is that uses the big words as well. So uses the word thrive, uses the word clean, then uses the word safe, which was.
Oh, right. Good point. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The point, the pull that was taken from the citizens.
The first one between natural and beauty may be sticking coastal.
Oh, yeah, good one.
Celebrates its natural coastal beauty.
Good one. Yeah.
We're making one. Sarah, we're able to hear that after the word coastal after natural?
And, and what would be fostered shared progress?
Can you elaborate a little bit more on, um, on fostered shared progress?
Yeah, in my mind, that, that kind of gets at the economic growth, um, piece that's called out or economic prosperity piece that's called out in two and three. So, um, in my mind, that means like everyone moving forward together or, um, you know, us progressing as a city in a way that's shared for all. But if, if there's a better or simpler way to say that, we could lift.
Progress and you put in, remember it's a beast down here. Uh, economic growth and opportunity.
We figured out a way to try to tie in.
Let me see.
Well, you've already got. You've already got business proper. Businesses prosper up there. Just go after coastal beauty, stick a period and get rid of the rest of them.
Yeah, we don't want to share, share.
Don't share it.
You've already got it up there then. Envision where residents, businesses and visitors prosper.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You're already talking about it. You're already, you're double, double taxing.
Joining and volunteering, volunteering, not just resident, like not just prosper.
If you were.
I was thinking that was more volunteerism.
If, if, if you were to kind of just have a period there, um, but it's, okay, what I think of like now is what's hierarchy of needs, safety is at the top of it, right? That's the thing that you want. It's like safe. I'm still a fan of the word inclusive. Um, North Bend where residents, you've got your residents, you've got your businesses and your visitors. Everybody's doing good, right? That's the vision. We're not talking about the how we're doing good. It's the vision. We want every, we want all those, we want the locals, we want the visitors and we want the businesses to all do good. We get to the how later, right?
Yeah, I, I agree. So period, get rid of it, call it a day.
Other, uh, anything other than that, we're just going to word, be wordsmithing.
I think this is a good. It's a little bit longer than, well, the one.
Don't be.
The, that city, that, the, what was the, what was the city?
I mean, you could say North Bend, don't drive through without stopping to say hi.
Oh, that's great. I love that.
Spend them some money.
Yeah.
It's implied.
But no, I like that.
Okay, well, it's a draft. And so the other, the other kind of assignment, you know, between now and the next session will be for folks to continue to, to think this over, shop it around. If there's anybody that you want to run it by as a draft and see how it lands for them. Um, and it, you know, won't be final, final until we get there, but that's great. I think, um.
Are you going to, will you be sending us out like, uh, the notes of our draft tonight?
Yeah, I will.
Soon.
Yep. Yes, absolutely. All right.
All right, it's wrapped.
So the mission statement then, and I'm so sorry it's hard for y'all to see, so we'll, we'll keep doing our best to.
Better now, I'm closer and it's bigger now.
Okay.
They're readers though.
I'm messed up.
Sorry, I lost my. I'm going to just reload this for a second. It's having a little bit of a tricky time. All right. Thanks for your patience. All right. So we will move on to break. Do you guys need a break?
Do you want to wait or do you want to just stand out in the scratch?
There you all do.
Yeah, does anybody need to use the restroom or just like, we think, is it a benefit rate or do you need a button? No, I want to stand up.
There we go. I have pizza. Have some more pizza? Yeah. Sarah, did you need a break?
I prob, I will. If you all want to take a quick break, yeah, I probably should, so.
We're scheduled what, some seven thirty? Let's, let's check in back in like another twenty minutes for a bathroom break, but let's keep going. Probably we got some.
Okay, okay.
We're doing some things.
Yep, all right.
We're doing some things.
So the mission statement, as I said, is if we're thinking about your vision, it's more of the role that you play as a city, thinking, city meaning organization. Um, in carrying out that vision. So it's, it does kind of help to capture what it is you all as a staff, um, do each day. Um, it's a bit more action oriented. And, um, it focuses on kind of being that bridge between getting from today's current state towards closer to that future state, um, that the vision really helps to capture. I'm going to make these bigger because I'm going to see and be hard to see. Um, but a mission statement, we often think of it, if you kind of dissect it, that it can fit into these three categories or these, it has these three parts essentially. So there's a primary action, kind of what you do, a beneficiary, so for whom, and then a how you do it. So here's a couple of examples um, from other cities. So to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Muskegon through the good stewardship of resources, excellent service and leadership for the greater community. And then here's an example from Oklahoma City. The mission of Oklahoma City is to provide exceptional service, that's kind of their action, to residents and visitors, the beneficiary, beneficiary, and then the how, we do this by ensuring the safety of the public, delivering quality services and maintaining infrastructure to support the growth of the city. So with this, I, we didn't, I didn't ask for y'all's input on this in advance, um, because I thought this is something we can hold together here with the input of the group. Um, so let's just start by doing that kind of breakdown. When you think about the role of the city, um, again, meaning the organization and government, um, what do you see as your primary actions? What are the things that you all do?
So.
Your primary.
I feel like that second statement kind of captured, there's, there's all sorts of levels of safety that kind of then end in fun things that you can do if you want to. And the safety stuff is around just, you know, not just police and fire, but like we have streets and we have traffic signals and you can control the flow. So there's a, all these elements to getting us to keep out of each other's way as we go about doing our different things.
Right, thank you. Okay, so kind of like, your, your role is providing that safe environment for people.
Yeah, citizens, workers, and visitors, I mean, they need to distinguish.
Sorry, it's a little hard to hear you all when multiple people are talking, so I'm sorry. You said residents and visitors?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you're providing a safe environment for residents and visitor, visitors, how do you all do that?
I hiring, um, qualified public safety.
The how is like, you know, people interactions and then physical infrastructure.
It's too bad, it's water.
We're proving too much, actually. Systems of seventy, we're proving at eighty-two percent of capacity.
So, I mean, we could even just working with this, these inputs kind of take a crack at some options, so it could look something like. Kind of ran out of, I thought I had it there, but no, now it got a little awkward, so we ensure a safe environment for our residents and visitors by providing the people and infrastructure. Um, let's see.
Suppose. For that environment. By providing the people and infrastructure for that environment.
Going to be safe and safe.
Yeah.
For the safe and safe.
Well, it's just a draft, it's a draft.
Because basically we're saying we're providing the people and structure to help like maintain the city.
The city of Beth provides the people and infrastructure to ensure a safe environment for our residents and visitors.
I like that.
Hard to type in front of people, I know.
It is the worst, yes, go back.
The infrastructure. They provided the cities and businesses that locate here.
Yeah. Looks good.
Any edits to that?
It's a good draft.
Yeah, okay. And we can, you know, like I said, we're just drafting tonight, part of the I'll send, you know, this full deck so you have kind of the, the examples um, to work from too. Don't be shy about looking at examples from other cities, no shame.
The examples are great, actually, the examples are really great, it's like, oh, okay.
If, if we're talking infrastructure, it is safe environment, because you're actually providing uh, abilities to take care of needs, like wastewater, roads and such to get around with, you know, and that, take a look at. So it seems it's a little bit even beyond, um, safe on.
Enjoyable even, or like, and what?
Beautiful, safe, enjoyable. We only have the budget right now for safe.
Right. We don't even have the budget for safe.
All right, I'll let you all kind of keep, you can keep mulling over that if you want to advocate for beautiful or enjoyable or.
Might be the no frills version.
Yeah, right. Might be a twenty twenty-five reality version.
Yeah, right, you get a street, period, and you get safe, you just don't need.
Any strides to provide?
Yeah, we do, are very good. Okay. Well, let's keep, so I was gonna move us into priorities, do you want to take a break or you want to keep rolling?
Okay, let's keep going till Sid, but again, momentum.
Yeah, sounds good, okay. So, I know I know you all have seen it, um, but wanted to first just start with what you heard from your co- community in terms of the three most pressing challenges. So, we heard housing and homelessness are a pressing challenge from the community members' perspective. Access to healthcare, access to living wage jobs, um, infrastructure issues, so such as your, you know, wastewater um, situation. Um, we did have some folks, you know, right, like, say something else not on this list, so I can certainly pull that, but these were, these were the things that rose to the top, um, for folks.
I could be wrong.
Yeah. When we.
Thank you, Councilor, you're just gonna add something, Sarah?
Yep, go ahead, please.
I should, I, it, this might not matter, but I just feel like, in the challenges, the, the, the second person is homelessness. And I feel like that is not about not having a home, I feel like that's about seeing homeless people on the streets.
I remember this would be a hundred people in the survey, so it's not a good sample.
Yeah, and thank, thanks for saying that, I just, I do want to acknowledge, um, that we do the survey so that you can get those perspectives of the community members who choose to participate um, into the room, right, so that we can keep those top of mind, and um, what we heard from the community members who participated in the survey is not a directive. You all get to take that as input, along with all the other inputs, you know, um, which includes your own perspective and expertise as both leaders and community members. Um, what we heard, you know, is kind of frame up and context setting from staff. Um, you know, everything else into, into consideration as well, so it is like one piece of information, um, to look at what we learned in the survey, but it is not a directive. Um, so here's kind of the, the theming um, that came out of what we heard and in terms of those three most pressing challenges, so community and social well-being, uh, mental, uh, healthcare and mental health crisis, um, infrastructure and, um, and the, the environment, community environment, um, economic unemployment issues, and then governance and public safety. Um, and then when we asked folks, you know, we gave that starter list, right, of, um, that you all helped to refine and make community specific, um, and we asked folks to, to think about here are some things that a community can focus on to make, make life better. Um, please sort them into order of most least important, and these were the things that rose to the top, um, from folks, so infrastructure, uh, public safety, housing affordability, economic development, environmental sustainability, and you can see the rest, so again, not a mandate, but helpful to know what your, um, what your constituents see as key priority areas. So, um, I took this, and then I took your all's good insights from the form where I asked you to look, you know, consider this input, but to write out what you would see as your top priorities. And I'm gonna put a draft list in front of you, this is just a draft list, it is just intended as a starting point because I find it can be easier to have something to react to. Um, and, and we'll go from there, so just like we've done with, um, we did with the vision. Now, can y'all see those? I make them bigger. So. Potential priority areas, so infrastructure improvement. Um, so addressing critical infrastructure needs, um, whether that's road repairs, utility upgrades, uh, wastewater system improvements, could also include things like walkability, might not make the cut, um, but um, infrastructure. Um, housing affordability and availability, so increasing affordable housing options, addressing homelessness, I know that's a huge, huge, yeah, um, concept in and of itself, but, um, implementing zoning and partnership strategies to make housing more accessible for residents at all income levels. Um, public safety, so strengthening public safety measures and improving emergency preparedness. Economic and workforce development, so fostering economic growth, attracting new businesses, promoting workforce training, um, supporting economic drivers like tourism, commercial development to help diversify the local economy. This is not perfectly worded yet, but I think given, you know, what we heard, um, as context setting is financial sustainability, so you know, working towards a balanced budget in which your revenues pay for services. So just want to open it up, like I said, this is, is not meant to be perfect, it's meant to give you something to react to and for us to continue to refine together.
And are the ones through five, like when we do settle on these, because like you said, these are, you know, this is just a draft, are we putting them in order of importance?
Um, we can, we often say that they are not in order of importance, but people will see them that way, right, no matter what, so I think it's good. I think it's good for us to list them in a way that, whether it's based on priority or some kind of flow, um, you know, where they build on each other, uh, we can certainly reorder in a way that makes sense.
Because what, my question then for the council and if whoever else wants to jump in is, um, you know, when I think of all of the issues that are facing us financially, in my opinion, the only path forward is to try to have some economic development to add into the tax base to have more revenue. We don't have necessarily a lot of control over housing affordability. We don't have control of what's gonna happen to interest rates or housing stock, or who wants to develop, develop here. But we might have, oh, you know, so I, when I'm thinking about, kind of like, I, I don't have any issues with any of those, I think those are all very good ones that could be, you know, maybe fine tuned a little bit, but I think those are, those are captured really well. Um, as far as like where the primary focus goes, you know, I get, this is where, like, this is where it's hard to, like, not look at the budget over there. That's, you know, on a, on a TV that we have in this room and go, okay, great, yeah, um, infrastructure improvement, but we get like two hundred thousand dollars a year for streets. So how do we do the infrastructure improvement on that?
Yeah, I actually have a question maybe for staffers about that, like, um, I think that in like day to day, month to month, year to year, the financial stability is the, is the primary thing, especially for us, because of the fee measures that we have. Um, and that, and, and I'm curious, and what does it mean for staffers if we put the financial um, just being year over year paying our bills, if that's first, how does that compete with the others? How does, I mean, you know, I, I, I feel like we need to have our financial stability to be the, the first thing, because in the immediate term, that is the first thing.
Right.
I just don't know, you know, does that matter to staffers? I mean, I don't know, you guys are coming up with the ideas and doing the work.
Who wants to answer that question?
There's no answer, it is okay, I understand.
No, I, I think it does matter, um. No, you, your task with financial stewardship, I mean, of the city, that's what you're your tab, right? You have that responsibility now? Have that responsibility, so, I mean, I think it impacts when we can demonstrate that. We are, um, I think I wrote down, I think Matt said, um, you know, um, how can we make the most of our money? He was like, I heard about that, and, you know, I think that reflects like problems um, are parts, and so, you know, I think that that fiscal accountability part is foundational to anything else that you're wanting to do. And also demonstrates trust, people does trust, you know, the community, which is really important to do. Because there's a, you know, we heard the cities, sixty-seven percent of citizens think their cities have enough money. So, okay, how do we like demonstrate that, if we build that trust? So they will trust you with the other things.
Yeah, so I think that, like, three, like, infrastructure, if, infrastructure improvement, like, when stuff starts failing, it's a big deal, the question becomes, how do we get it, like, again, I get economic development is gonna try and save us potentially, but are we spending the money trying to get people to move in here, or are we spending money to try and get, like, our city not to implode, I don't know, like, what, what is more important or how we can maintain those things potentially?
I would say two, the public safety, because that's what we have more control of, over all of that. And then three would be infrastructure improvements, because well, you, you have some power over, but it's all.
Start to be three, and then economic development, housing.
Mm-hmm, agreed.
Even though they're not in any order, people see them in an order.
They do. Well, so do we, but we also like, uh, to me, you know, not math that, you know, to me, how I get a goal depends on how I can save for that one, it's like, right, you know, so like, how we give and take now gives us a few more minutes to get to the other bigger things, uh, if it's first priority.
Not that I give it just the same, just without economic development, without us getting things in that we either want to be able to generally physically be sustainable.
That is true, that is true.
But maybe because the workforce is connected with that, I, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, you only have so much power to bring business in, right?
Yeah.
You can only offer so much.
Well, and again, if we have, we spend money trying to get people to come in, is that money that we're not gonna have other places, potentially?
I don't see it as the job of the city to promote workforce training.
Yeah.
We could take that line out, that's not what, what, that's.
The one just economic.
The law has it, but that's not our job, isn't. Promote workforce training.
Our job is to attract new businesses as best we can.
And, and to answer your question, this, this is a question, actually, it's like, well, if we're spending money on, say, economic development to bring in, this would take your money away from us.
Yes.
And the reality of this, but it's been a revenue agency dollar.
Yeah.
And so. And so, that pot has been a great large pot, that's going to shrink if not disappear.
Yeah.
Um, so the dollars that were staying in North Bend are now going to leave North Bend.
Yeah.
And what we'll be left with is our contribution, which is a quarter made, so that eventually will come back into our general fund.
Yeah.
And so, it's, it, think of it as, I don't wanna use the casino, but basically if you go in and, 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 uh, you win. And so it's, think of it as, I don't wanna use the casino, but basically if you go in and 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 you win, you back your your chips. You know, you get a whole lot more. And so um uh someone has now taken away the majority of our chips.
Yeah.
I know, I know, it's like thinking budgets and to see that not the best analogy.
So how do we feel about kind of uh one through five?
In the order that it appears?
In the order of every draft right now.
Yep, yeah.
Sarah, how are we doing? What's the next on the list here?
Y'all are killing it. Honestly, this is, this was like our main thing we were trying to accomplish tonight was to draft vision, draft mission, and then work on these priorities. If y'all, if we're feeling good about these, and if you still have energy, what I would probably do is to start to lead us into some of the next session output and to start to think about in each of these areas.
Let's then let's take a five to six minute break to give you an opportunity to grab a drink of water, use the restroom. Would that would that be enough time?
Yes.
Let's do that and then we'll come down. Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay.
And jump back into the uh work session. I think Sarah's gonna come online. Oh, she's already there. Uh we've got, um I'm gonna have our our finance director, um wanted to share an observation and let him have the floor first before we jump back in.
I just wanted to share something I was thinking about when we were talking about your mission, making through your mission statement. And I was really just focused on you all as a council and the employees who are um at the city of North Bend. And I wrote down the words, I see this demonstrated in your council meetings. I see it every day here with uh city staff. And it's like, you're caring, you're thoughtful, you're informed, you're helpful. You're you're all being inspired. Um you're experienced and you show kindness. Like I see all of those traits like so much and I do feel like it's part of like your council DNA. But it's also part of like the city's DNA as well. And if there's any way to kind of weave any of that in.
Okay.
I'm just something to think about, but those are some of the things that came to my mind when we were talking about your mission and, you know, thinking about you all.
Can you reach out and email those too?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have our city uh finance director email kind of those thoughts to you, Sarah. And I think that's such a good point because these are, you know, when you work through this, they're like really hard decisions to make about where the priority should be, where the focus should be. Because we wanna do all the things for the community, and I know the staff does too. So I I always like to think more like I'm the guy like this is what it was for everyone. Um and you know, we're, but the reality is like, we're trying to figure out what street we can repair this year. Which street? No one. Um and that feels um sort of dilating sometimes when you wanna do it all. So thank you for recognizing that. All right. So we're gonna go ahead and you said uh the next section here was, was it some fashion items?
Yeah. So what I'm thinking is if these draft priorities are are generally sounding good, and again, they're, you know, especially in the titling, they're draft. Um and so we'll keep working on them. But if they're sounding good, um was imagining that we could go um kind of one by one and just spend a little bit of time brainstorming around what would, what would success look like in this area? So how would you know if in two years you've had the impact you wanted to have? Um what kind of change or outcomes, you know, would you hope to see? Um and then given that, what would you um, what strategic actions would you want to take on? So I'm just trying to get our first, bear with me, I'm just getting our first slide ready so we can have a space to work in. Okay, and I can share my screen. So. For, so the first priority was um financial sustainability. So again, we're a little ahead of schedule, so I would have done more of like an orientation in our next session. Um but when we think about success measures, we're looking for um ways, ideally concrete, actually measurable ways um that in two years, you could indicate that you had had the impact you wanted to have in this area. You created the change you wanted to see. You worked on the right things. Um and you have now had this kind of impact or outcome. So is there anything that comes to mind when you think about financial sustainability? In two years, what do you wanna be able to point to and say, see, we, you know, we had this impact or achieved this outcome?
No deficits.
Yeah.
So no funding gaps.
Okay.
Yeah.
No increase in general fund.
Yeah. We have no funding gaps in what's coming into the general fund and the services that you want that that we're wanting to offer.
Everyone paid.
Okay. My might might not be wording this correctly, so please feel free to edit my wording. So no funding gaps in general fund and core service areas?
Yeah.
Okay. And here and we can, we'll continue to brainstorm. Um and we're usually going ultimately for like one or two big things um that you can point to in terms of those success measures. So what else would be a good indicator of success in your financial sustainability work for the next two years?
Well, if our if our sewers were on sustainable funding course, I mean, it's the same, then you're talking about the general fund there. And I would think like whatever we need to do to get the sewer system off the fee limits and aren't this funding that actually pays for it?
So sewers on a sustainable funding course. So they probably will not have achieved it in two years is what I I hear you saying. But like you're on track or you're projected to get onto a sustainable funding course? Within two years?
Why not just go for it? It's on a sustainable funding course in two years. We don't need it. We don't need it. Well, I mean, why not? We know it's that critical. You know what I mean? Like, why put people around? Sewers are on the beginning steps of the first phase in the declaration of starting to be.
Do I mean, do you all, I wanna help you create a plan that is both um like challenging, that pu- pushes you to focus in the right places and the right ways, and is that realistic? So thoughts on what would be realistic related to the sewers and funding in two years? And we might, I don't know if there's even like concrete numbers that within the next month, you know, you could get to.
No, it's a, it's a different, it's it's not so much a a money uh coining. It's it's changing laws or getting measures passed. So there's, this is the only third courses we have.
I'm trying to. There, no matter what we say next, it's just rewording that first one.
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
You know?
Right.
And maybe take. Pick up with.
Cause the sewers fit in the first one.
Sewers, sewers is a different, sewers is not the general fund. Sewers is an extra zone. It's completely different.
Core service areas. Is that not a core service area?
Sure, you're right.
People want to be able to project or that know that it's going somewhere out of of.
Other than the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I just, I I don't know. Why not? No funding gaps in the general fund.
Because the sewer.
Sustainable funding.
Sustainable funding could be the strategic action. Find a path forward for the sewer, to be honest, to save the little funding. Yeah, right. That's the action to make sure that there's no funding gaps in the core services.
I mean, I just feel like.
We can keep them separate?
I I feel like, I feel like they're two, they're going to be two different paths, very different, very strange. And the general fund is a different set of options than the sewers.
Well, you wanna say no funding gaps in general funds and then no funding gaps in core service, core service areas are funded?
Just cut out the and core services. No funding gaps in the general fund. Sewers on a sustainable funding course.
There's other core services. We don't care about roads or anything.
Well, the general fund includes public safety. That's the one thing. So.
About this, I mean, do we wanna list out the core services and then have a strategic avenue? You know, cause like at some point, we're gonna get to the how. And there could be, if you list those core services, basically which are the departments?
Yeah.
Then there can be an action item for one. Is it a, is it a, is the action item to make sure that there's no gaps in funding services for the parks? To create a parks and parks districts? Is there one, is another action for the core services of police to try to increase the public safety fee?
I just think that if there is the general fund and sewers, I would want to not just have the ones. Like.
So how how general tell are you talking about?
How I'm saying is general fund covers fire, police, parks, administration. So it's the rest of the services. To me, the library district, but the library district is.
Okay. Sarah, do you think it's too much to list out the core services, like the the ones that Council Jones just listed off?
Exactly.
I wouldn't necessarily list those all out here in the success measures. Um unless. Yeah, I mean, if it's assumed, if we're saying no funding gaps in general, in the general fund areas. Um. The only. You do want this strategic plan to be a communication tool with your community. So that I think that could be the case made for listing out like what that includes so that people see, oh, they're gonna focus on making sure public safety, parks, you know, the things you just listed out are.
And maybe that's a good idea because I think that that we know that there is an opportunity to continue to inform the public about what's in the general fund.
Sure, yeah.
And so for now, like let's list one, one through seven or A through E or however you wanna do it. Um.
So fire from these.
City of the house.
Um.
So fire.
City administrator, Sean, finance.
Cool.
Administration, city administrator, Sean, yes, and finance.
Public works.
Oh, public works instead of.
Public parks are mostly enterprise models.
But as in finance, it's public, it's city administration.
But isn't finance, isn't public, isn't city administration?
I don't think so, I don't think so.
I would, I would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Garbage, that's it.
Yeah, just, yeah, there you go. What are your four part in the general areas? Fire, police, parks, city administration, public works?
Um, I think you've got them, I I in city administration, um, you kinda got administration, but I adds another also includes your sales and counts.
Yeah. We do not need to list ourselves as a fucking gap.
I like this, okay?
I guess it's parks and recreation. I mean, there's other pieces in there, right?
It's really just the, I don't use.
Okay, yeah. Cause you pick a pool.
The pool's on it though now.
Oh, the pool's on time.
Yeah, it's, it used to be in there, but because of the special wedding and. You know.
Just leave it, we're good. It's it's inclusive.
What yours living, I think that to.
Technically, perhaps technically bronze, but in spirit.
Okay, and now, um, are now are we looking at to go into strategic actions on the success measures?
Yeah, so. But for the strategic actions, now we're looking at a handful, so I would say certainly per priority area. No more than five, less is more. So if we can get like a couple, three to five. Um, projects, initiatives, efforts, you're gonna take on in order to achieve these success measures. What what would it be? What do you see as some of those potential initiatives or project areas?
Counselor Hamilton, Hamilton has a solution, go ahead.
Strategic cuts.
Well, hold on here, before we start cutting anything. See, that is one option.
That's, we're gonna consider it.
Well, I'm I'm not talking, I'm talking about, you know, like, uh, spending that the city does that we can get rid of. You know, stuff we fund that don't need to.
Such as, or you just, you know that there's probably areas that you can.
Just put that in there.
Okay.
Well, Jeff, give us a list.
I was just gonna say you could just maybe, you know, uh, yes, a balanced budget.
No, I mean, well, I guess, yeah, that would be in the budget.
I think he's talking about program cuts.
No, no. There's stuff, there's stuff, the memberships and stuff that we give money to and stuff like that, that's. We could get, and it's not saving the world, but it's a starting.
Well, we have to do both, right?
Our tiny monies.
Well, you just did one, I'm sure you're a conversion, so.
Yeah.
What was three like a version?
I'll save you thirty thousand here.
See, look, we already did.
Yeah, but not yet.
So we're discussing if we put it up a bullet point that says strategic cuts, but I'm just trying to. Misfer whether there's not heard any more places to cut. But let's.
I I know, I understand what you're trying to say, or.
I mean, there's.
Really she's down to essential real, I think, maybe. I don't know, like realistic budgeting or like, I mean, real like. I don't, almost like. Just want like authentic costs that are supported, um.
Yeah, yeah, I was wondering if you wanna frame it more around your.
So you mean my plans for that underground Ferris wheel with the U R A money is not gonna work out without.
Well, let's let's put in the line now, um, uh, uh. Strategic cuts, yeah, if older, I'm not handed that.
What about, and maybe this is where Jeff is going, what about framing it around your budgeting process? So. If, you know, if the work is around, um, about, you know. Uh, improving the. Improving the budget process or, um, values based. Budgeting, you know, pri- priority based budgeting process, maybe.
The truth of the strategic action is that we're going to hear from staff about their best ideas. So, you know, this is about, you know, staff doing the best.
You're absolutely right. This is not made in line of, so, so I'm your city administrator, so I see success measures there. No funding gaps in general fund areas, okay? What does that mean to staff? What does that mean to the the proposed budget? We're gonna bring you a budget with, these are all the things that can be cut in order to get there.
Yeah.
And so you all are going to go through the list and decide in the budget committee meetings, what you're gonna cut.
Yeah.
So we're going to come to you with a proposed budget that says. You cut all these, cut these, cut these, this is, this is what it's going to take to uh achieve your goal of no funding gaps.
Yeah.
That's, that's our job.
Yeah.
Your job is to come up with, what is it that you want us to do? You do it through this process.
One of the, and our goal is to not have deficits. We don't wanna have a, like, that's a big part, you know, if we're trying to get a balanced budget and that is one of our goals, like, I feel like we are thoughtful about.
Yeah.
It's just tough.
Yeah, and then, you know, we learned vernacular, it's interesting, cause if you go, the the fascinating thing, we we propose to you a balanced budget.
Always every year and after.
Every year, because we're required to by law. But we do it sometimes by making it up through grants or taking money out of savings, which is our um fund balance. And so the general public actually doesn't understand that vernacular. And so really what we're saying is, um, you know, whatever you got in that checking uh book of yours, you better not spend more than what you got there. That's what you're telling staff, and that's okay, that's 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 your job, and that's why we go through the process.
So I think the the next strategic action is, um, you know, we all know there's so much you can.
Sell us the sewer or figure out how we can get the legislature to make it.
Work on an action plan to, have you ever decided if that's even an option to sell the Noyle's safer cap?
The attorney said it's very, 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 very complicated because we have all the right of ways and all of these other issues um at play. Um, and so, uh, it's not that it couldn't be done, question is, how would you accomplish that?
So maybe one of the strategic actions is explore, uh, um. The option.
Privatizing.
To privatize, privatize the own sewer.
Well, the problem, straight privatizing this, if we're still controlling these, could they, for example, privatize. Uh, O M I and Jacobs. Their treatment system, they abandoned and ran and could they still charge fees and pay the private contractor? But I mean, we still have to deal with the bees, so without transferring the assets.
We have to.
Into somebody else's holdings, which is also a conversation, but.
Could they rent the sewer pipes?
Well, let's 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 not get in the weeds as well. Strategic action is, if you're looking at sewer sustainable function. You know, uh, your strategic action is for staff to evaluate. You know, and come to you with every potential solution to to meet that measure. And if we're going to do that, then you have to make a decision. We can sit here with one scenario all day long.
Right, right, right.
Because we don't necessarily have the answer.
Right.
But we have two years to work, you know, if you take the L O C approach.
So.
Cut out of the general fund and just send the money, you know, down the drain.
So, um, is there any options for sewer funding, hey?
Does the, do, in a strategic action, do we need to say here about, yeah, get that, get something on the ballot for May? We know it probably won't pass, but get something on the ballot tomorrow.
Okay, so consensus, consensus is you're gonna have to, if you want something on the May ballot. You don't really wanna give staff some direction potentially under other business really fast.
Okay.
Um, if you want it for the May ballot.
So another strategic action, you know, we're looking at, so this would be to, um. Urgently explore and ballot initiatives from for, uh.
Stop there, ballot initiatives, just.
Yeah. Okay, actually explore ballot initiatives for funding opportunities?
But I know what it's for, yeah.
Those general fund opportunity?
Just stop there, let them, let them go to with the flow.
I think that's it.
Yeah.
But the attorney said, just start with funding ballot initiatives and, yeah, just keep getting them and 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 asking, just keep asking.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, at some point, they're gonna figure it out.
Or tell us what they, what they are willing to pay enough, so.
Cause if they clearly tell you what they don't wanna pay for, that's what they cut. As hard as that sounds.
Get rid of that.
Sewers.
Get rid of the sewers. Yes, we're on re divert it to the library fund, cause they've got, they've got basement, they've got money. Is that okay, John? Can I do that?
Okay, how's that with Sarah?
Good, yeah, how are you? I wanna kinda step back, look at it in whole. How are y'all feeling about the kind of priority title and description for this area now? Financial sustainability, work towards a balance, balanced budget in which revenues pay per services. Does that still feel like a good title?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay.
Perfect, beautiful, looks awesome.
You seem like you're behind, Jimmy.
It's, it's terrific, it really is. I'm depressed about.
Situation.
What reminded when we say strengthen public safety measures? Like, not the word majors as in like ballot measures, but what is that?
Why don't we take it out?
Safety measures.
Strengthen public safety and improve emergency preparedness.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
Let me just take that word out, yeah.
Okay. Um. Alright, so, public safety, again, we're kinda thinking two years out here. What is it that you want to be able to say you have achieved? Um, impacts had, change made, measurable outcomes reached. In two years related to strengthening public safety and improving emergency preparedness. How would you know if you're successful?
Is it, is it worth being a dead horse and having another financial statement in here? Like, what are you thinking? This, the same thing, the public safety, public safety programs are fully funded by the general fund.
Yeah, I think that's. Were you even there, Sarah?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's try it and let's see.
Yeah.
I just feel like we're just stating what our staff is already like.
We know like, is that realistic? I mean. As you know what a new ladder truck costs, if we need to have a new ladder truck. Doesn't mean you can't fill a bond issue or do something similar.
I see.
But you got a two million dollar piece of equipment.
That we can't afford.
You have a million dollar shortfall right now.
Yeah.
Well, I suppose you could just say fully funded, pull out by general fund, so I hook her by crook for him.
Yeah, but if we do that, then that would mean that we are looking at pulling money to pay for a ladder truck, which I don't know if I agree. To be fully funded.
Well, please, this is the opportunity, not hold back, so, you know. Have that conversation on items that you feel personally about.
I mean, I would love a ladder truck. That's why I was so excited.
Oh, God. Because we can.
I know.
Because one company makes sense or something like that.
I think that's very cool, I would love that, it'd be true, I think it's a very cool statement.
Yeah.
We need to reword that because it's.
We gotta figure out what it is that you want, and public safety, so as you know. You have police, you have fire, you have dispatch. That is public safety. So when you look at that, just know that that's public safety. Uh, and that includes emergency management because it's within public safety. And so if that's what you're saying is, public safety programs are fully funded by general fund. Then we get them fully funded by general fund.
Oh, no, okay.
But you will also recognize that you have other keys there, so.
Okay.
You know, the the reality is, is they should be fully funded. Probably period there.
Period.
Period, yeah.
So I've been public safety meeting to you, and it's like. And you said, fully funded, fully funded, yeah.
Fully, high in the sky would be, like, if there was enough funds to have a level of service that the chief decides is necessary. Like, then you would have another resource officer or another school reading people with the officer, like, it's totally funded if you to 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 have all the things that you want.
Yeah, the the question comes down to fully funded to what?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's, that's really the key thing. And so you take recommendations, you either from your department heads.
That's. Yeah.
That's part of the budget process. So again, don't get in the weeds on that.
How do we capture that there, though? Fully funded to what the department had? Is recommended?
Uh, see, that's, that's where it goes to. It gets fully funded. To 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 the level that the public's willing to pay for.
Right.
That's, that's really what, but you don't wanna say all of that, so.
Right.
So we go out and and we try to do the, the. Utility uh fees or otherwise, but the reality is, is that. You may not be able to achieve fully funded if something else happens, I mean. Think think about, let's say that the airport decides, well, you know, we don't need that value added priority service, you know? Uh, let's say that, um, uh, the code call tribe decides to start their own. Police or fire or go to contract services from someone else, so all of that loses money in your general fund. And so we can play one of scenarios, but again, not the purpose here, just.
Okay.
In my opinion, color funding, programs are fully funded, and you as a governing body during budget time. Ultimately decide what that all with.
Okay.
Because we've already given you staff recommendations and requests through the budget process.
Okay, so.
Yeah, but it's not like the better than what it already is, like, I don't know if we even need that, but. But our goal already, the years from now, I'll be the same goal that we have.
Maybe, I mean, really.
Yeah, you haven't, you haven't had any strategic actions to it, so we haven't gone out since.
Maybe. Yeah.
What, twenty nineteen on on an initiative for funding for public safety?
So I, the only way to then, if we need to, okay, public safety programs are fully funded is the major. The action then for that major, there's only one way to get there.
No.
Right?
Yeah, there's other ways.
Actions would be, we could have that, right?
Say it again?
Cuts.
You just said cuts.
Yeah, there're gonna be cuts in other departments.
Well, and currently our public safety, like, we're, when we were fully staffed, will we are allowed currently, correct, for like the first time?
We were fully staffed or what, basically, in a second.
Oh.
Yeah, for, yeah, for a nanosecond, um, uh, we we got there.
We did get there.
Um, but it's now we're in the process of trying to get there again.
Okay.
Um.
So I think we haven't done public safety because we've, we've been doing all careful.
Well, let's ask the chief of the question, if the, if the success measure is public safety programs, or I'm sorry. The priority is to strengthen public safety and improve emergency preparedness, if that's what. The priority is, what does that look like? Is it like, we had already had a reduction in. Uh, burglaries this year or things like that, like, are those, are we getting into the details there of? If we're saying that we're having strengthened in public safety, what success measures, how do we measure that? Like, what does that look like to you?
Oh, maybe that's the second bullet point, the.
Yeah.
The programs are fully funded and we see.
What do we say?
Decline.
If you have more of a year, you want these, what?
Evidence based results, um.
Yeah, let's have a second bullet that that says that crime stats go down across the border or something.
Crime stats are down with evidence based results?
But, but no, that's an evidence based result, the crime steps go down.
Crime stats are down, period.
Like, yeah.
Yeah, crime rates, is it, crime rates are reduced, is that true?
Unless it becomes a crime being born or anything.
But how do we do that with?
Well, dispatch we gave to like, um, sheriff, bay.
Transfer, we're paying for.
Transfer.
Not you.
And so what about fire then?
Right, crime rates reduce, um.
I'm not giving you a laugh.
I understand.
I wish you could.
You probably are.
Let me know.
So in a little box around the side, like Walmart. I mean, I don't say that jokingly, I say it as a reality.
Oh yeah, I don't.
I just saw a department, and and I mean, I know you mean that with with all sincerity. I just saw a department that just got a ladder truck first, uh, their their one that they sold, they said was fifty-two years old.
Wow.
And a lot of young, we're so used to that, and and how big is that ladder, cause back then, that's ladder truck day. By the way, you never there.
Let's do, is, yeah, let's do a third bullet for fire, what it, you you, I mean, is fire? Fire stats, what what are what are the words that you use when you calculate your score?
Calls. It's a call volume, and we're trying to do what we can to reduce our call volumes. But that's a challenge as well.
So probably just like fire prevention, fire, like prevented.
Yeah, preventive and fire prevention, we're we're.
Like prevented this really?
Yeah. Therefore, education or how we treat all that, that's part of like our mission.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, it um, you know, it it's interesting that it said North Bend Fire and Rescue. When it really ought to start with.
Rescue.
North Bend Medical and Fire, but. The reality is, is when you look at the stats, the overwhelming majority. All all of our um firefighters also have EMP training.
Yeah.
And that's because, there's only, how many ambulances in the whole county? Well, for for base cities.
For base cities here.
Base cities, base cities ASA now, or there's, there's two active most of the time, which cover North Bend and U.S.A. because it's transfers going on. Cause they make more money on transfers than they do here, and so, if you wait for an ambulance. You know, our our staff literally is is there taking care of them. Saving lives before that ambulance can ever get there, they're they they take over for transport there.
I feel like that was part of the reason for getting that custom small vehicle.
They're out.
Because you had to, when you do a call, you have to take a medical and a fire truck out, so that was the small.
Yeah, and we have. We have the people to be able to man both of them, that's that's what is showing the difference, our maintenance cost.
Yeah.
So we're actually running out of the smaller ones to be able to help, but we still have our people at the station able to respond out to a fire, because we never want to leave ourselves. Exposed when a fire happens, and we're out in such a small vehicle, so, and it has marked difference in our maintenance cost.
Um, so, should we do fire and medical call volumes, like, I mean, that's hard to reduce, it's like, anything we can do about it? I don't know, what?
The one thing I will say, that that we have. Flattened off with our medical and fire responses to a plant, and that's due to what the police are doing as well. We're still interacting with each other.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not going on as many homeless people calls as we happen, and that makes a difference in our responses. And so it shows how police and fire are working so well together right now, like, we're getting along well, and what one does benefits the other.
That's.
Good job, um.
Awesome, that's so good.
Is this a spot?
This is good.
Where we would want to look and see. Are there any other types of shared resources or partnerships that we could look at, like we did with the nine-one-one dispatch?
Well, I mean, I still think nine-one-one needs to go out, it has to go out to a district, and that district may actually be multiple state district. I stated wrong, speaking, you know, we're we're not close there, we're not even. You know, striking service on that kind of conversation, um. You know, there's different models, um, I'm not saying that they're effective models, but, yeah, you could cross train every. Police officer to also be, uh, you know, an initial firefighter. Uh, there there are agencies where they have a turnout here.
Well, we don't, I don't think that this for this, for anything we would recommend, I feel like that's.
Well, I I hear your, our question, which, yes, for really worth the models.
Okay, I know.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah.
But my question is, is like, okay, if we're strengthening public safety, and we know that. Um, is this the, is this a spot where we look, is this the place where we would add, that we wanna explore? What the models look like?
Explore partnerships, explore models, yeah.
You know? Is it a, is it a county wide fire districts, is it a, um. You know, like you said, there's cross training or something like that, I don't know, I think that's totally out of my scope, but I'm just wondering if this is the area that we put that in.
I think they're saying, when you were specifically talking about dispatch models? Is, but also explore partnerships?
It could be partnerships, it could be districts, I mean, and we we learned that Charleston and. North uh Coos Bay and uh. Uh Milton, and they were all talking about a potential district at one point, going all the way out to like Martin Luther Street.
And that is.
Figuring out other areas, so yes, there are other models, other approaches. Um, consolidation isn't, oh, I didn't see that word.
Yeah, don't get there.
It it's not a big um topic out here on the west coast, um.
Not, not the C word, but the um, uh, the partnership, the um.
Or consolidation, not consolidation.
Yeah.
Yeah, here here's what happens if you create a large fire district. Every district you create affects our ability on taxes here through compression. So, you get to the point where, uh, you can have all these districts out there. Well, once you hit the threshold, you can't tax anyone, we have compression right now, our own pool of it, we lose about seventy thousand a year, is it? Is that our record? About right, so that means we don't even bring in a whole amount of 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 what we. Traditionally could get because of compression, so add another district on top of that, and. Yeah, it, believe it or not, it's not the answer to the solution. Um, this is a county that used to get to get our regular basis and talk about uh districts and fees and stuff, so. You know, but again, then let's staff, you know, delve into those. Certainly the LOC hasn't, they they haven't come up with anything other than fees in twenty thirty-two. And that that's through a lot of work statewide.
So.
There's just not a will, the people out there that want those type changes. They don't want sales taxes, they don't want, you know, you creating fees, and so, when you look at these, we can explore them. We're just not going to be able to bring you back great res, um. We're not gonna be able to literally respond.
So, let's.
So.
We have ten minutes, fine.
Yeah, just trying to better understand, what is, what is the work? In this area, so we have this explore models for increased partnerships and collaboration.
That's that's what we can do, I mean, we're, we we don't, we've already got, you know, that we need to increase funding, we have lots of reasons why that's too hard. So the only thing we literally can do is have staff explore working with other people, or working amongst themselves to do these things more effectively. That's it. That's it.
Well, our brains are also getting all Saturday things, and they're doing this around that, so this was like a jump where I was not prepared. So again, it could be something where we go, uh.
Yeah.
Think of things that our brain currently is not thinking of.
Okay, yeah, I.
Sorry.
That's okay, yeah, I'm just thinking about things that we have in the success measures, like crime rates are reduced, fire call volumes are reduced. I don't want you all to make those kinds of claims, that you're gonna reduce things in those areas. Without us being able to identify some kind of work that's gonna happen that you think would support that, ma- maybe this increased partnerships and collaboration. If you're able to identify and implement some new models there would, in fact, free. Kind of free staff and resources up to.
Well, but also.
More responsive.
Knows best how to change their organization, they would know better than us. So.
Okay. Okay, well, yeah, so this is an example. This was great because we got to kinda play around with the next steps. Um, and so you all have a sense of the, what's coming, um, and what the homework. Or process would be, um, for I'd starting to identify some success measures and strategic actions in each of these areas. Um. Uh, how are you all feeling? I had us meeting until seven thirty, but if folks are, you know, we accomplished what we needed to accomplish tonight, so if folks are starting to. Tucker out, um, I'm happy to to wrap and, like I said, give you all some homework assignments, um, before the April seventh meeting.
So, so April, so remind us what we'll do on April seven?
We're gonna do this, yeah.
Yeah, we'd be doing this, what I what I probably will do is generate um a form, cause that seemed to work well, you all, I forget my exact numbers, but I think I had at least. Eleven or twelve of you participate, um, in the form.
Yeah.
So, um, so good participation in the form, um. If you all are willing to do that again, I may take a similar approach and have you all. Work on drafting success measures and strategic actions in each of your priority areas, so then I can come into the meeting warm, saying. Here's the input that you gave, here would be some recommended starter success measures and strategic actions.
So we have two out of the five kind of in round form. Um, I think Schultz has hit in a wall here a little bit, I'm willing to go and do a couple more here, I have on my schedule till seven thirty anyways. Are you, is, can I?
I don't think that we generated great strategic action, and so it's really hard for my brain to, uh.
It's a draft.
I get it, and I get that it's a draft, but I'm also saying that I think if I went back and we read this by myself, and we all generated, we'd have a lot more options versus us trying to. Oh, but if you guys have great strategic action for the next ones, then I will sit back, let's take a look at the next one, okay, let's take a look, let's, are you.
Sure. Yeah, of course.
Maybe fifteen minutes or so, let's.
Of course, yeah.
I think, I wonder if, I'm feeling frustrations, I look at these, because to me, there's like only, like, it seems like one path forward, we need to do this thing, but we don't have any money.
Yeah.
Same thing for your area.
Oh yeah.
But let's see if we can, like, here we go again. Infrastructure improvement, okay. Rest of city's critical infrastructure needs, including road repairs, up upgrades, wastewater system improvements, and enhancing. Walkability to ensure, um, safe, reliable services, so Sarah, like, like, I'll just, you know, vent here for a second, like, this is. Clearly a priority, how do we get there if we are locked in on, you know, funding? It's, I think that's where the frustration is coming from. So the success measures would be, you know, more walkable streets, um. Enough, how did we say it earlier, enough funding available to. Fund the critical infrastructure projects.
Or utilize a party, it's like a party, road repairs that aren't just one road a year.
Yeah, be able to be on a more, uh, in sort of a eighty year rotation, hundred year rotation.
Hundred plus.
Sufficient funding available to meet the, uh, from the crumbling streets.
Maybe we can stop with that, that or, I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, all, every single one of these is so wrapped up in the, not, I mean, they're all wrapped up in funding, but they're all wrapped up in the. Um, hard limits that we have, that North Bend has, in particular.
So, I know it's. A little. Disheartening, uh, to, you know, knowing that there is, there's more you wanna do in these areas. And if we're thinking about the strategic plan as something that can provide. Direction to staff around what to prioritize. Um, both in terms of effort and budget. What, when you think about infrastructure improvement, or maybe maintenance, is a a better term? Um, what is it? That you, knowing they will not be able to meet all improvement needs? Based on what, would you want to see them, you know, prioritize things, or above all else, what do you wanna make sure they maintain or focus on?
Right, so sewer, the sewers are first.
Oldness.
Yeah, roads are the second most complained about. And then it's, walkable streets is great, and, you know, clean parks.
So you're saying wastewater?
Wastewater's number one.
Waste wa, yeah, now, yeah, we're doing it, we're wastewater. Urgent, roads are second.
What did we get at the top there, why why do we have really reliable services? To ensure safe, oh, just to ensure safe, reliable services, yeah, that your that your packs are working, okay.
But this is, this is fair game for editing now too, so if we wanna tighten this up or make any of it more clear. Um.
Yeah.
Welcome suggestions there, cause it's definitely a little bit wordy.
Um, I mean, we know that that there's limited, um, grants available, but it doesn't mean that we don't try to still explore grant opportunities.
Yeah, one. Public, they already do a great job of trying to compare, like, when we're doing, like. Federal or with major roads doing improvements, like, so we're not double spending kind of, and so I think that's like, but we're already doing that. You're great. We need to get those people, the the volunteers to do the walkable city.
That might be enough for tonight on this, just kind of like, at least, we've looked at it, we've had a set of eyes on it.
There's all kinds of, if you wanna think outside of the box, there's all kinds of things you can do to improve your infrastructure, I mean, you could. If your street's repaired, put some skin in the game.
Yeah.
This, simple, you won't have a lot of people wanna do that, but.
Opera, like.
That's.
Could be.
You're about to worry, if you think your street's a worth. We'll do an eighty-twenty split.
Yes, I love this, I love this, I mean, not that we'll take it, but just as an awareness.
Every street came up on the, actually, there's somebody. Cause it was already on the.
I do like.
Okay, so here's the cap for that, but like, um, explore, uh, uh, pay to play opportunities?
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
Where, explore resident initiated.
Yes.
Resident, resident initiated.
Content.
Or the pay, what do you call it?
Tree pavement.
Or a blow.
For residents initiated and self-funded.
Uh huh. Well, yeah.
Street, do you understand?
I like, I think they're really, yeah, really, Sarah, Sarah, wait, hold up, do you understand what I'm saying?
Funding options.
Um, re- where residents can can, um, put some skin in the game. Not real skin, wait a minute, no, it's all going wrong.
Funding options.
Yeah. But residential streets.
We could have passing ordinance that required, uh, everyone to install point operated, um. For this.
What?
Point operated.
It's so good.
Is it, is it gonna cost more?
Who's gonna collect, yeah, it's my party leaders, cost more to collect the party.
Yes.
Somebody was asking me, they said, why can't you put a tool on the North Bend Bridge? I'm like, I'm pretty sure that's an ODOT thing.
Yeah, there's actual legislation that's saying no tools.
Okay.
No.
Okay, this might be enough for this one, and let's peek at the next one.
It's good, it's good, it's good, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um.
Let's think.
Next, we have. Sorry. Economic development. Let me. So. If you did the work you wanna do in regards to economic development over the next two years. What, how would you know if you were successful, what kind of change or impact would you see?
You have reduced, um, vacant business storefronts.
Yes. 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 Increase new businesses. Yes.
So the positive layer of that would be, so you would have increased new, more business.
Well, I mean, I think we should leave that.
Yeah.
I think we should leave that, not get them.
Yeah, you could either reduce or increase.
Because people working at home, in their little boutique consulting, doesn't fill up the commercials space, so.
Yeah, so give.
That doesn't gain you anything either, you got fifty bucks for business license.
Right, I I'm I I'm not, I'm, all I'm saying is that vacant storefronts is the measure.
Right.
And reduce, so don't, let's not give it to the positive or negative.
Yeah.
For this one.
Sarah, do it, would they write success measures, do they want it to be more positive than negative potentially?
Um.
Doesn't matter, I just know that with.
I think here, I again, if you're thinking about this as a communication tool with the community members. If vacant storefronts is what resonates. You know, I could, uh normally I would say more positive, more, you know, future focused, but if that's what resonates. Then I think there it has meaning.
More storefronts that are not. How do we support tourism and commercial development? I mean. Be nice to have money.
Success, maybe, go ahead. You'd have an increased number of participants in community events.
Or like an increased, or people stopping by the visitor center would be. People are stopping in.
Increase participation in events, increase visitors to the. Visitor bureau.
Yeah, we have a a new visitor center and it's so they track how many people come in there.
Wouldn't you also tally that off your hotel rate, your vacancy rate in hotels?
Um David, do we have a handle from Airbnb and Verbo and those places about? The um.
Occupants and decrease in hotels that lodging to have.
We can only aggregate it for you, um but you know, we know. If there's increases, decreases, that nature, we also sit down and talk with our. Uh individual providers. Um. There's also, uh VCB also uh pulls reports that has data as well.
Okay. I feel like uh just because it's not property tech, I feel like we need to revisit. Our um. Money to. The the Bay area's visitor bureau so that we can have more capital. For for making tourist attractions, you know, like maybe. Yeah, like I think that's a strategic action, and I'm wondering if that gets to in reviews or not.
I don't agree.
Um.
You is reads in the weeds or don't?
She doesn't want to change that.
That's some corollary.
Yeah, I.
I don't know if it's the place to have that discussion.
It is in the discussion, I'm saying.
But you wanna have a plan that says reduce.
I'm asking the group, yeah.
I know, I'm. How about evaluate our tourism enlaging tax?
Our tourism enlaging use of.
Use.
Use, yeah, just to see how it flows, I just would, yes, think more towards building attractions would be better.
Well, I mean, and every, does every city have the ability to raise that, or does that have to?
Um there are caps, um uh so in uh.
So a couple, I've seen cities do a couple different things, there's um ballot initiatives where you can have an increase. To capture some more money, you can have, this kind of goes back to infrastructure, but you can have. Um a gas tax that's during the height of the tourism season.
Oh, wow.
Or all year round, yeah. Newport does an extra percent and a half during tourist season.
So during tourist seasons, some targeted things, you could have an increase. Um Ashland has a. Sort of fee for restaurants.
They have a tax.
There's a tax.
Not the US tax.
They, so they call, so so it's for some revenue sources that are tourism bait.
Which also means ballot measures, I think.
They they do, I think um you quoted a figure, so over the last ten years, we've sent the the VCB a million dollars.
And you said ten years?
Yeah, over the past ten years, we've sent them a million dollars. With the uh stress that's now gonna come with U R A, that's going to affect.
Yeah.
Because we pay um a portion of. Seventies and the staff out of that, so it's T L T, it's U R A and 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 some general fund. And so. Um it's it's going to, that will stress each of the departments that currently um charge. Um to perform functions there for economic development, and that is our economic development.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So strategic actions, evaluate use of tourism and lodging tax, do we wanna e- explore? Potential tourism targeted.
Ballot measures. For increasing. Yeah. I I mean, explore, well, I guess that's part of evaluate.
It's the ballot numbers for acting, supporting tourism, but we're gonna charge them. I don't know. Explore efforts to. Tax the tourists. Okay, so it's, let me rephrase this, you're exploring efforts. To capture.
What did?
The financial impact that the tourists make on the community.
Well, well, we're exploring fees for tourism activities.
Capture revenue.
Yeah, revenue, good work.
And to put back end to promote the economic development.
For revenue, I guess, because we're gonna.
Is that, I mean, like, I'm trying to figure out a way to make it positive, because we're gonna tax them for coming in, but you're gonna use that money. To do good things in your community, so they're gonna wanna come back. It's not just to tax them, it's to pay for the, to pay for and maintain the tourism.
Beautiful landscape.
Yeah. Yeah, approaches the capture and letters tourism related revenue.
For that social beauty.
Yeah, to continue to provide that natural coastal beauty.
Oh my god.
Okay, so this is just drop, hey, guess what, we got one more, let's peek at it.
Barely eighty percent of the way there for this.
It's at least now, it frames it so that if we have other ideas, then we can. Come back together, so let's take a look at this last one. I got nothing. Housing affordability and availability, increase affordable housing.
Well, no, we have to, cuz the dress homelessness, we were talking about maybe looking at numbers, let's see if we can either like shrink our. Like homeless areas.
Oh, yeah.
Summer time, it's like.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Cuz we talked about like, it's kind of a new situation, but we could look at, cuz we talked about maybe doing less available space for them if not needed.
Yeah.
Right?
So.
Cuz it's an address homelessness, sorry.
Address homelessness and we. That sentence could be taken two ways, and I think you had um had on it.
It's not even positive.
Huh?
It's not even positive.
It's, yeah, it wasn't like, let's help.
It's the consistent results have been um they don't want a homelessness problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So success measures, I would say less, uh you would have less calls to public safety. If we're, if we were like addressing homelessness in the way that this is probably was intended, like we don't wanna see it. And there was less people in the area, it would be less calls into the police station, right?
You don't count it that way though, do you? I mean, like, your your community resource officer.
Don't, don't, they would probably count how many.
Does counts, but.
Oh, yes. You're talking some data next one.
So, so we would have less calls to public safety about vagrants. Or like trespassing.
Yeah.
The trespass.
Yeah, okay, do you have less calls and then like.
I think we need to, I think we need to walk around the downtown with, hand those people a card and say, get yourself on property watch. Because there are so many no stickers for property watch, and it is a. I'm here to tell you.
So so if we have less ones to public safety, if that's a success measure, um strategic actions. Um revisit the um time, place and manner of ordinance.
Yes, yes.
Or and the potential reduction of campsites.
Yeah. Or and then if we have to.
And then, you know.
Do you wanna help sleep sites in Arkansas?
Sleep sites, sure, rest sites, safe rest.
Rest site. Rest.
Safe, safe rest sites, at least they actually turned. And then let's just do one more on this about um.
Is there anything related to housing affordability or availability, whether it's a success measure?
We're still wondering that David has a hail Mary on that formal and gets it somewhere. I don't know if that ship is still.
So regulated for one, we have to produce so many housing units whilst having fully. Functioning, the state created that, we have, and we have a report card and everything else. Um the state created, we're gonna do thirty six thousand units this year statewide, now they created an agency that's gonna review. And you're gonna be penalized if you don't produce appropriate number of housing. Uh on an annual basis.
How do you produce that if you don't have money already?
They don't care. But that's not, that's not a question on the surface.
And what's the penalty?
Brands, brands, um funding, yes. They made, they made a great player.
Okay, so can we um tear down the community center? And sell it to a developer or uh to give the land for free to make twenty five housing units there.
Absolutely, and then we'll have a nominal cost per sewer, but then we'll have a much greater impact. Cuz if we don't have the money to get it up, so yeah, the answer probably is yes and.
Look at property.
We've got a hundred fifty units coming in, that's gonna actually go and contribute to our sewer system, so they're not accounted for the benefit. Even though there's no money coming in for the.
Improvement of the tourism.
Public safety.
Exactly.
But we won't get dinged maybe.
But get you, yeah, we won't get dinged, but you know.
Get dinged anyway.
Yeah. And you get twenty houses for mental health.
So what do you guys wanna put there for housing? Are you in, are we gonna?
Probably be in, yeah.
Okay, well, we can, we definitely can start with a success measure, so. For housing. Um. You would have, the success measure would be, you would have more housing available. Your housing stock is right, as you would have.
Yeah, but we're trying to get them to say, increase housing, how are we gonna get there?
I know, I'm walking, I'm looking at, like, so the success measure is, is that we would have, yeah, increased housing.
We have to tell them that their success will be defined in the, in the resales.
Yeah, so it's just developing partnerships, I'm like.
Yep.
It's um.
Well, I think already already said that, you know, they'll be able to give a center structure that far outweighs any pilot that whatever we're able to do. So that's gonna help solve our issues.
That's awesome.
Develop partnerships with. Whoever can create. Uh whoever can. Yeah, private development.
Is there anything related to the like zoning or permitting or?
We don't have a U G B that we can expand, we don't have a, we don't have, so other towns would do things like. Eliminate their um s- system development fees or expand their U G B, we don't have system development fees, we don't have a U G B that can expand. We don't have any property that we can, that we really own and develop, except really the community center, is something that we can. Or we can demolish city. Everybody better work at home, and we work from home and we'll build housing here, I mean, we don't have anything that we can turn into minutes.
The the reality is, and and that's the big part, I love that. Um the big, the the big part here is, you create all that, create all that, create all that, but it's the impact. And so when you have a general fund that's already stressed, it's gonna impact police, it's gonna impact fire. And we have a limit on how much that existing wastewater treatment plant that we have no money to expand can actually take.
Yeah.
And we're how close to that? Well, there, well, that's that's a one measure. We're over eighty, eighty-five to ninety percent, we have about seven hundred four.
Or not.
I think we're worried stress.
I think, I think this gives us some context, like how we really need to think, like, big ideas.
Yeah.
You know, um because a lot of the. Path forward that maybe like other cities have, like, we can't do fees, we don't have a U G B, we. You know, so it's like, how, like, we really have to think creatively. About some funding streams.
Should I take out the zoning strategies, are there, cuz then are there any zoning strategies that you can?
I, we wouldn't, I don't think that would be a strategic action.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything in, I mean, there's things that are like, um, we already have it. In this, like, you can have an accessory dwelling unit. In your backyard and things like that, those are the kind of things that you can do to increase. So.
So, yeah, I don't know if this is gross or not, but I, you know, to take the vacant storefront idea. A little further, um I I wonder what it would be like if we had. Uh vacant residents, you know, like, we we have, like, in my block, we have so many empty houses that have been emptied for. As long as I lived here. Some of them, I don't know if my people have stayed, some are not, they are not vacant, they are not on.
Yeah, but they're privately owned, they're privately owned.
So how about the explore a fee if you're an out of state.
Landowner.
Landowner.
Vacant properties.
Uh fee if you bought property in North Bend.
Well, vacant. I bet we could get a measure passed for that, because everybody who's voting on it isn't in a vacant residence.
That's state. Legislative, you know, they have to make it a usable property.
What?
That we have to take our vacant lands and make them into usable viable property.
Okay, so that's not what I'm talking, I'm talking about the private.
Private vacant lot.
No, not even a vacant lot, an empty house, beautiful, empty houses, nobody lives in there. Not in Airbnb, it's not on Verbo, it is not being used. So what's out tonight, then? Um the, uh so to take, to explore um fees for vacant properties. Maybe out of state owners get a higher fee than in-state owners or say North Bend owners. But vacant property fees, if you're not renting it out, if no one's living in that thing.
Wow.
Get somebody in there, that would help affordable housing, you know, if if every single vacant. Or fifty percent of the vacant houses in North Bend. Were actually, put some people in there, or rent some, go down, or or, you know, there would be more housing available.
You must be peeking at more windows.
So 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 over here, data, I mean, uh just to fact. The the water board knows how many meters they have, they know how many they have turned on, turned off, etc. Um. You know, the the reality is, is the sheer number, there's a, there's a far much greater number of folks. In basements and RVs and otherwise renting, blah, 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 blah. That utilizes our systems and. You know, it's it's, it's um, we have a uh. A um residential uh sewer rate that um has a minimum, but it's not based on usage like commercials. And so therefore, you know, you can flush it many times as you want, has no different real impact. And so the gun costs, you know, you could encourage folks to like go outside to see them, to go to the restroom, turn their works and then come back. And they'll have no impact on us.
Maybe that's a ballot measure, maybe the ballot measure is that your your fees are on usage, the, you know, somehow.
And so that's, that's one thing I've asked, yeah, that's one thing I've asked Ralph is. You know, to to make sure that we are. Uh th- th- then we are equitable in whatever fees we're doing, we.
Yes.
Take a hard look at our ordinance to make sure, because the ponyville is small, love on the debt, but. They get two hundred meters, so they're paying thirty dollars a month for all of our police. For all of our police and fire services and everything else, and so, it's, it's things like that, and then. I wanted to make sure that we're protected on the new. Housing development comes in, because they're planning two centralized meters, and so, they're residential, we need to make sure that they get charged residential, so.
Yes.
Things like that, well, we have properties that are duplexed, they have six properties, but it's only one meter.
Yeah.
And so, staff is taking hard looks at those type issues. Um, they don't fall on, on debt meters here. But again, everything that we come to you and say, hey, we found this, you wanna cover this, you know, the reality is, every year you get so much increment. But the gap is growing faster.
Yeah.
Um, and if we can slow down, and so, internally, as, as, as even the conversation today is, we recognize that. You know, it's not. It, 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 the residents are feeling the same pinch, they're having to pay huger, larger utility bills, a lot for water. You know, all of that, uh, because all of that's collectively gone up, up. Uh, I noticed that there's a measure now that was just dropped, they're, they're gonna try to limit how much the power companies can, can increase, well, what happens when they do that? They don't maintain the system, they, they don't have enough workkerries when storms like this, so there's always the checks and balances, so, it's out there, but. You know, you guys, uh, they're great discussion points, and, um. Uh, as, as Counselor Schultz said, it's probably time to wrap up, so that we could come back with, um. You know, sort of fresh ideas and thoughts and all over the document, and then, uh, work with Sarah to, you know, get, get some information to the floor. That, uh, uh, can get us to the next step.
Sarah, do you need anything else from us right now, or any closing thoughts?
No, I don't, I'm just, really great work, thank you for the, the engagement, the reflection, thanks for the pre-work that everyone participated in, and it really helps, so. Um, I will be following up, I can send you this deck, like, as is, tonight, right now, just so you have it. Um, but, and then it'll take me probably a couple days to get your. Um, kind of next steps assignment out to you, but I'll send this just so you have it immediately. Um, and yeah, just, thank you on my side.
Okay, all right, well, we appreciate the work, and I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting.